Okay, it is Monday, May 10th, 2021, 9:00 AM. Wilson County Commissioners Court is now in session. We'll have the opening prayer by Mike Hindrich, a deacon at the St. Anne's Catholic Church in LaBurnia. Mike?
Let's bow our heads and pray for God's blessing. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks this morning for the opportunity to live in this wonderful and amazing country you gave us. We know that all the privileges that we have come from you, and so we ask that you give us the strength, the wisdom, to protect these privileges with all the choices and decisions we make. A special blessing upon those first responders and law enforcements who are living and working in challenging times. We ask that you give them the grace and the peace that they seek, so that they may do their job and protect us and do everything that they are called to do. And Father, we ask the blessing upon all the men and women who serve this great county, that they are able to make decisions and based on your will, everything they do, may they do that pleases you. And we ask this in your son's name, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Father, Son, Holy Spirit.
(Inaudible) United States of America. (Inaudible) stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas law. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Mr. Wiley, you still there? Okay, Mr. Wiley, teleconference stand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Going to agenda item number three, public comments.
I have none at this time, Judge.
Thank you. Do we have any?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, agenda item number four, certificates of completion and awards. And we have this certificate of completion. Rosalinda Sanchez, Rose Lovas, Oga Marrero, John Holcomb, and Jennifer Hausenblut have successfully completed TAC cybersecurity and Awareness Training 2021 certified the 28th day of April, the 27th day of April. Is there any more?
No, sir. That is it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, agenda item number five, extension activity reports, the handouts that we got.
There's one judge from Fort Worth, one from San Antonio.
Nicole still on maternity leave?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Thank y'all for what y'all do. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're going to agenda item number six, Richelieu Jackson County Judge, Courtney White, Texas A&amp;M Extension AgroLife. Presentation of certificate of completion for Commissioners Court Leadership Academy Class 9, Session 1 to Commissioner Gary Martin.
Yes, so we have an award to present this morning. Going to read just a little blurb about what it is exactly. For more than 50 years, the BG Young Institute of County Local Government has served local governments in Texas. Since 2005, the institute, a part of the Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Service, has offered the Commissioners Court Leadership Academy to further enhance the professionalism, broaden the knowledge, and enrich the experience of county judges and commissioners in Texas. CCLA involves four sessions over a two-year period, three-day sessions in Texas counties and one seven-day session in Washington, DC. So today, for Commissioner Gary Martin, I have the completion of Session 1.
All the way there. Commissioner Wiley, does that bring back memories?
It doesn't bring me.
Are y'all here for court?
Yes.
Three blocks down.
Three blocks.
It's at the district court.
You could have just found the field and we would have been done.
Okay, agenda item number seven, Richelieu Jackson County Judge, discuss and take action on Community Council of South Central Texas Community Action Month proclamation. So you can go to community council, but we're gonna, we'll read it. Okay, proclamation, whereas the Community Council of South Central Texas Incorporated was established as a community action agency on May 11th, 1965, and whereas the service area encompasses the South Central and Southwest Texas counties of Atascosa, Bandero, Bee, Comal, Dimmitt, Edwards, Frio, Gillespie, Guadupi, Parnes, Kendall, Kenny, Kerr, LaSalle, Livo, Maverick, McMullin, Medina, Real, Duvalde, Valverde, Wilson, and Zavala. And whereas, community action has made essential contributions to individuals and families across the nation by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities. And whereas, community action has a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperous, to prosperity in 99% of all American counties. And whereas, community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. And whereas, community action promotes county, community-wide solutions to challenges throughout our city suburbs and rural areas. Whereas, community action delivers innovative services and supports greater, supports that create the greater opportunities for families and children to succeed. And whereas, community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. And whereas, community action has celebrated 57 years of innovation impact, providing prudent results for Americans. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners Court of Wilson County, do proclaim May 2021 as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of all Wilson County community action agencies. And everybody is here from community council, so, pending a motion to accept the proclamation. Motion by Commissioner, filed, accepted by Commissioner Pedola. Did you hear that, Commissioner Wiley?
I did.
Okay. Is there any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, so we have this. You can stop by and sign the proclamation. Okay. And we're going along to agenda item number eight, Richelieu Jackson County Judge, campus Hope you covered your mouth. According to this, we had 4.77 voter percent voter turnout. That's not real high.
We had a total of 277 ballots that worked out.
Ouch.
That's all we had.
Thank you.
And we did use our, this was our first election that we used our new equipment. Everybody was very comfortable. They liked the machine, so, let's see what happens in the paper. But everybody, pretty much, we, at early voting, we only used two paper ballots. And on Election Day, we had about 30-something paper ballots, but everybody else did electronic. So, we're pleased with that, that at least are willing to try it.
The main thing is the, the poll workers are getting used to them?
Yes, sir. We had trading for them prior to it, and I had two classes, I had two corner locations. So, we trained with them, and when they went out there, they were fishing, it was very easy compared to our old equipment or Dominion, but they really enjoyed it. It was a lot easier to shut down and they were able to get here faster. Yes, I have verified the numbers. They all look correct.
I think a motion, Judge, will be approved. The canvas of the vote. Motion by Commissioner, filed.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martin. We approve the canvas of the votes from May 1st. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this motion carries, so. Okay. Agenda item number nine, Jeffrey Pedola, Commissioner of District 3, Barbara Shanger, discuss and take action on Sibyllo Ridge Division in LaBurnia floodwater from subdivision flooding powered property. Mr. Pedola?
I think, Barbara wanted to say something, but I have met with her this weekend. I advised her that that is a civil matter, that the county is not, doesn't control or have anything to do with detention ponds. So, again, Mr. Gimble, who owns Sibyllo Ridge, has offered to repair her road under the condition that she would sign a release of liability once he repairs her road. So, what else can we do?
Let me, let me speak my piece here, please. First of all, well, my name is Shanzer, with a C. Shanzer.
Okay, Shanzer.
And I understand everyone makes typographical errors, and there are some typographical errors in the documents that I have also. But first of all, I would like to thank this body for having me here and letting me speak about the problem that not just I am having, but also my neighbor, Mrs. Reba Stewart, is having with the Sibyllo Ridge subdivision. Also, thank you for having the prayer before this session, because that tells me that there's a moral component to this decision-making, not just facts and figures, but the morality of what has happened to us living downriver from Sibyllo Ridge. First of all, I'm here to discuss the flooding by the Sibyllo Ridge subdivisions, and this has happened on two occasions. Now, let me preface this with my history. I've been on my piece of property, which is up a little unhell from the exit. My property goes down, meets Reba's property, and I use an easement that comes from her property. I have been there for 30 years. I've rambled all through those woods with permission from her mother, Mrs. Cooper, and from Clarence Ellie, who owns certainly property. I have been through that land. I know the lay of the land. I know every, I know the dips and curves of that land. And that land is, without Sibyllo Ridge, it was incapable of flooding. 30 years, never saw flooding. When Sibyllo Ridge put the subdivision, at first it was okay, but on August, August the 3rd of 2020, two and three-quarter inches of rain came rushing down those, that subdivision, because all the culverts come down to that one detention tank, goes right through. Now, they say it's a detention tank, which implies it should detain the water, but the way it's shaped, it's more of a conduit, and it makes the water go faster. And so that, that, they said it was a creek there, and there may have been, but it has no name. It may have been some insignificant little dip. Now there's a raging river that came through. And on May 1st, we had five inches of rain, and it was even worse. My easement to my property is completely demolished. I have to drive through Ms. Stewart's property to get to my home. So at this time, I'm wondering if my, how that is affecting my property value. What we want to do, or what I would ask the court to do, is to find some way to divert that well. In my last calculations that I did in August, and I have documentation here, I calculated that there were a million and a half gallons of water that came through that detention tank and onto our property, because it was a fast train, and I know, they said it was a 50-year event, but here we are, eight months later, and I had another flood, even worse. But I calculated a million and a half gallons coming through there. So, if the court doesn't mind, I would like to distribute some information, because I have been dealing with Sibyllo Ridge since August, and so has Mrs. Stewart. We have been trying to get them to do something, and the final interaction with Mr. Friesenhahn resulted in him yelling at me, belittling me, not giving me a chance to speak, and hanging up the phone. So I have, I would die with you if I can give one speech. Can I come back here?
You can touch them on this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
You can give Ms. Chaplin? Sorry, Ms. Chaplin?
You have enough to give me now.
Oh, yes, I do.
Okay.
Now, the first page on the right, that is the map that I drew in August of the Sibyllo Ridge subdivision flooding. I've been doing a lot more construction since that time, so there's increased flooding. The second page that I draw is a copy of the Texas Water Code that forbids people from diverting their floodwaters onto other people's property. Now, I sent, I'm hoping you received it, but I sent an email with videos of the flooding on Friday to each of the commissioners and to the judge, so if you had a chance to read those, the pictures don't do it justice, but when you see the video, you can see what a raging flood is. And then the third piece of paper, those contain my calculations. I did some research. I'm not a reference librarian, so I know how to do research. And so I put those calculations on that sheet of paper, indicating that it was a million and a half gallons. Now, the fourth sheet of paper, Mrs. Stewart and I, and Mr. Gimble, Mr. Friesenhahn, Mr. Chastain, had a meeting when they discussed the fixing of the road. I wrote those, wrote that up and sent it. It's not, it's not a contract. We got a verbal agreement, but I wrote it up and sent it out certified mail, which was shown Mr. Friesenhahn, who will look it all up. And the last sheet of paper is the diary of interactions with Sibyllo Ridge. And this, this is my diary. I kept notes on every interaction I had with those people and how it turned out. So, that's my information now. So, I know Mr. Pedola has told me it's a civil matter, and I'm confused about that because I understand the county had to sign off on these permits in order for them to do that building. But my goal here-
And we had engineers, and I had the county engineer go back and recalculate all of the, everything on that subdivision, and the county engineer assures me that all of the calculations are correct, and that's all I have to go by.
Okay, well, what I have to go by is my 30 years on this, wandering through property looking for lost animals and, and see, I know the lay of the land. I have that personal experience. The engineers probably don't. They're looking at facts and figures and numbers, and so I know that land. And the only difference between 20 years ago and today is all that concrete and all that flooding, and it has severely devalued our properties. What, what we would like this court to do, if possible, is to stop all future construction until this matter is resolved. We want Sibyllo Ridge to divert the water away from our properties. Now, there are ways they can do it. I'm sure they can get engineers to divert the water away. And I want my road returned to its previous condition. Now, I know it was not a perfect road, but I've driven over it for 30 years. It was drivable. I maintained it. It was old. You know, it was rocks, but it was drivable. Now, the ruts are neatly almost, and it's just, it's a horrible condition. And would you like to talk?
Has Mr. Gimble offered any resolution?
They said that they were going to fix the road.
What's that?
Mr. Gimble said they were going to fix the road. He hasn't offered any resolution as far as the flooding. So if the road is fixed and the flooding continues, it seems to be a waste of effort, but they have offered to fix the road.
They stopped getting in contact with us. Sorry, I just, they stopped getting in contact with us. They did get, he was able to speak to them. They said they're still willing to, if we would sign off. We've never been presented. I've been asking for documents. We were willing to sign off and release. I'm a little hesitant now, because the flooding's happened again. I don't know the point of fixing her easement road if it's going to keep flooding. I understand 50-year, we seem to have unprecedented, unprecedented rains lately. I don't know, every year. So this is the second time in less than a year, and it is getting worse. So I don't, I don't know what, we, if we keep fixing the road, what's going to happen every time this happens? I don't, I, it's, we think we got five inches. My husband did look at the deep, you know, the rain hit, you know, national whatever. I don't know what it's called, but it only showing 3.5 inches. I believe that's probably a little bit incorrect. I don't know where they got their numbers at. It did seem to be a little bit heavier that day, and it came rushing through, but we get this all the time now, and there's no stopping it. It's, it's a Y. Y'all can see it on the papers. It just goes right through, and it's getting worse and worse. So what's the point of fixing it and releasing him when, if it rains again, it's all washed out again?
Well, number one, the road was never a properly built road. So if Mr. Gimble comes in and builds a proper road with limestone base and puts some bar ditches or some drain, there is absolutely no drainage on that road except for the ruts in the road themselves. So the water took that channel, and yes, it washed out that road, because there is no bar ditches, there is no drainage ditches for the water to go into. So if he comes in and fixes a properly built road, then that should solve the problem. And he's willing to do that, as long as he's released of his liability. He's not gonna, he's not gonna maintain your road for the next 30 years.
I will say this, he's never offered to put any drainage in.
I would say he would fix the road, which that would be-
But he never, he did not mention any drainage in the back. It was, he did tell us what he was going to do, and it didn't include drainage, just so y'all know. It didn't, he did not mention that to us. So we weren't aware that he was ever going to put in drainage. It's never needed it before. So now we're putting a drainage to accommodate from Sibyllo Ridge down my road. That may be a solution, I don't know, but that was never mentioned to us before, the drainage.
Well, I guess as I said, the road was never really properly constructed, so there is nowhere but for the water to run down the ruts of the road.
Who owns the road?
I have a legal easement.
She's got an easement on this.
Mrs. Stewart.
The road itself.
Mrs. Stewart owns the road.
It's my property.
But I have a legal easement. And that's my only access. I have to use her road now to go to my property. There's no possible way I could sell it in that present condition.
What gives them the right to dump this water on this, our property? What gives them the right?
Gives who?
That Sibyllo Ridge. Sibyllo Ridge subdivision.
Oh.
What gives them the right to be able to direct? When this, when this culvert was built, and to, they, they bought the property in 2017. Actually, I think they bought it before then, but the subdivision, what they call Phase 1, they purchased from Clarence Ellie, and they put a road in, and they put the homes on the side, and they built this detention pond, which they will call it Slot 11, Lot 12, right in there, going, angling towards our property. I was concerned about it then, but I will say we had a really bad rain in 2019, no flooding. They went ahead and purchased property next to that as well, put homes on that side of the road, and then also started Phase 3 in 2019. I understand the engineers' numbers said they were correct, and they, they very well were probably when that detention pond was built. It was built in 2017. Phase 2 and 3, the property wasn't even purchased yet from the other property owners to even start the subdivision. Now they have it, you can see it on Google Maps. They do have pictures. They have a huge detention pond. It's going from the top of Phase 3 into this detention pond. Into this detention pond is flowing to the side. If, if you would like to see pictures, I do have them. I did purchase them from, or print them from Google Maps, I guess you could say. I do have enough for everybody. If you want me to- You can kind of see, this is also, these paperwork that I'm handing you is a picture from their Facebook page. It says Sibyllo Ridge. It's their pictures. I did not alter these pictures. You can see where they have it drawn up, that it's going, and they have all of these phases, all this water going directly into this one detention pond, which is now going on my property. There is no way for those calculations to be made at the time it was built, because Phase 2 and 3 did not exist. It wasn't even purchased yet, so that's why I don't understand how the numbers could, I, I don't disagree with the engineer. If you were to look at their documents, when that was built, I'm sure it was valid, but now Phase 2 and 3 is loading it in and sending it more, and I do not, it's hard for me to understand how those calculations were taken into effect when that particular Phase 2 and 3 did not even exist.
Mr. Stewart, Sibyllo Ridge.
Anderson County.
Judge Fauci, just comment very quickly. The purpose of the approval of the plan by the county is not to provide an insurance policy for the neighboring residents. And so I do not understand why there's an expectation that the county has any responsibility here. This is a civil matter between the developer and the landowners.
Is it possible to halt construction, halt permits until this is resolved, and if it hasn't opened up?
That would be for you to see an attorney, and I believe there would be a way to do that, but you need to have your private attorney do that.
Okay, if I am going to see an attorney, I plan to do the label myself, how do I access the documents that led up to the construction of the Sibyllo Ridge?
How do you want?
Access documentation.
What?
Documents like flats.
Documents like flats, permits, drawings, calculations, whatever went into-
The law has a way of doing that. There's a subpoena that would come to each party that has documents that you want. They would be turned over. And that's why you have to see an attorney. This is not something an individual could do themselves.
So I, as a public, as a citizen, cannot go into the records and view these myself?
You can, you can send out the county an open records request and list the things you were asking for. And if we have them, with very, very few exceptions, we will turn public records over to you, if that's what you would like. If it's from someone else other than a state or county institution, you would have to send this subpoena through your own attorney. But you can do an open records request.
Do you have any more to say? That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Chapman said that this is, it's going to have to be a civil matter here's for it. But I would look into anything that Mr. Gimler might help you do on your road. That is an option.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along to agenda item number 10. Richard L. Jackson County Judge Brenda Foe Corvino County Auditor, discussing possible action on disbursement of budgeted hotel occupancy tax funds for year 2021.
Thank you, Judge. I have given you a letter dated May 10th, Honorable Commissioners and Judge Richard L. Jackson, regarding the proposal to disburse the 2021 Hotel Occupancy Tax Funds per Section 352.1015, Use of Revenue General Provisions in the Texas Tax Code. Revenue derived from the tax authorized by this chapter is to be expended in a manner directly enhancing and promoting tourism and the convention and hotel industry as permitted by the applicable provisions of this subchapter governing the use of revenue by that particular county. That revenue may not be used for the general revenue purposes or general governmental operations of the county. Wilson County currently has $63,166.80 in the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund balance. This is the second year we are collecting the tax. It is my recommendation that we disburse part of the funds as we did last year and keep a rolling balance for use as needed in the future. The county budget is $68,000 for disbursement. However, I feel it's in the best interest of the county to disburse funds as recommended below based on research of Wilson County organizations who promote tourism as defined in the tax code section above. And this will also leave a balance in our fund balance available for future use. And also taking into consideration, we still have five months left in this fiscal year. And these are the same organizations that we, that you as the court approved last year. Same organizations, the Laverneia Chamber of Commerce, the Laverneia Greater Chamber of Commerce, the Florisville Opry, the Florisville Peanut Festival Association, the Florisville Chamber of Commerce, and the Stockdale Chamber of Commerce. I'm recommending a distribution total of $45,000, which will leave us a balance of $18,166.80 for any other organizations that may come in and, again, provide any type of heads in beds, so to speak, in our county.
Thank you for going through and doing this again.
You're welcome. And yeah, this is something, these are funds that, that the court approved to put in a separate fund last year so that we would keep an eye on it because, you know, by law, this is something that we have to use these funds for because we are collecting it, especially now with, with things starting to open back up and people starting to move around more often. We're going to start seeing more. And, and we've actually had some hotel occupancy tax revenue that has come in since October 1st, you know, despite the pandemic. So it seems that it's, it's, it's growing, and we're bringing heads to beds in our county, and so that's good. You know, this weekend is the Spring Fest for the Peanut Festival Association. Stockdale has just announced that they will be having their watermelon jubilee. So we anticipate that our hotels will be, will be full for the next two to three months at least, so.
Yes, we've got, you know, five more months of this fiscal year to collect the hotel occupancy.
Correct.
So that's going to, if some event comes between now and then, we can still assist them.
We still have a cushion, correct.
I'll entertain a motion to- I'll make a motion to disburse the funds of the hotel, or the 2021 Hotel Occupancy Tax as presented by the county auditor.
Second.
Oh, second. Second by, I guess Commissioner Wiley. Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Wiley. Is there any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so what, it has, so we will, we disburse them out. And there's still, like I said, there's still money in this account, and there will be money added to it in case another, somebody comes along that's going to have a particular amount that's going to benefit the heads to beds. Okay, thank you. Moving along again to agenda item number 11. It's Leanne Hoeschek, EMC 11A, utility permit 638, Southern Spring Water Supply Corporation, Precept 4, County Road 104, review and approve. Excuse me, 401, I said 104. Motion by Commissioner Wiley, we approve this.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perdola. Is there any more discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so this. Don't forget to come by and sign this, Commissioner Wiley. Okay, moving along to 11B, non-statured transparences. B1, 136 Blackjack Road, Precept 3, Johansson, discuss and take action.
I make a motion that we accept that also for the variance on Blackjack Road.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Perdola.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martin, that we accept the variance on Blackjack Road. Is there any more discussion or comments on this?
Judge, Ms. Hoeschek, did they get all the information that we?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, if you look, they added the soft pond, they added the well. Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's my care. Okay. 11B2, 167 County Road 402, Precept 2, Brown, discuss and take action.
Okay, this one came before the committee was given a favorable recommendation. The property owners are, want to convey two acres which has a rental house on it. They're of an age and-
This is a rental property, they're going to sell the property, you just want to add two acres to that rental property.
Yep.
So they add two acres to it? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fowles, second by Commissioner Martin, we approve. This, is there any more discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, okay. Okay, now we're going to 11C subdivision. The settlement, discuss and take action on release of letter of credit.
Okay, it's, it's to the point where their two-year financial guarantee is up for release. The final inspection, maintenance inspection was conducted, and everything looked good, so it's time to release their letter of credit.
I did the final inspection, and everything looks really good in that subdivision. So I make a motion that we release their letter of credit.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Perdola, who was the second? Commissioner Martin, no, Commissioner Fowles was the second, that we release the letter of credit. Is there any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so this motion carries. Okay, moving right along to agenda item number 12. Eva S. Morinius County Attorney Minutes.
I've handled those out, and they have been properly reviewed by the judge and Mrs. Catherine.
Make a motion to the prison minutes. Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Perdola, that we approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there any additions, corrections, deletions, or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, this carries. Okay, so we've got all this. Okay. Agenda item 13, Jan Harrell County Treasurer Financial Report. And it doesn't look like we have none. Agenda item 14, Jalen T. Bottor for Human Resource General Specialists and Payroll Personnel Change. She is gone, she, her husband is in the hospital in Corpus.
Yes, and I didn't, she didn't get one to me on Friday. So she usually gets it to me Monday morning, of course.
Just take it up on this, Commissioner 14. Hope everything's okay there. So now we're going to agenda item number 15. Brenda Corvino County Auditor, bills.
Okey-dokey. And total bills is $189,255.48.
She always shows up at those bills.
I know it.
What?
She's never even late.
There you go. You're welcome. This is all his stuff, it's still fresh.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented. Motion by Commissioner Martin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perdola, that we accept the bills as presented. Is there any more questions? Additions, deletions, comments, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so we will approve the bills.
Anything there, Judge?
Yes, what?
Forty-six minutes.
Okay, at 11, excuse me, 9:46, we are adjourned.